..................
Okay, Kiel.
Here.
Behrens.
Here.
Matson.
Here.
And Jas.
Yes.
Jones, Horn, and Bowen are absent with notice.
Any additions to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
One favor.
I don't know.
Close. Motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting from nine through three.
Make a motion to approve nine, three minutes? Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Hi.
I propose. Prove bills submitted for payment, I don't see any. Here. Right?
Huh?
No bills for payment.
Yes, those should be in the packet, the bill report.
It's still loading.
Huh?
It's still loading.
Oh, it's still, oh, sorry.
Make a motion to approve the bills submitted for payment?
Uh, I second that.
Discussion? Jas?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
And I guess. Do we have any public input on non-agenda items? Of our first visitor and our only visitor.
Yeah, it's pretty quiet today. Or tonight.
ABC Ver, twenty twenty-four pool.
All right, good evening. We had a slow start to the season due to cold temperatures. Our returning guards this year were Jocelyn Jardine, Giselle Jardine, Avery Schmeichel, Liam Schmeichel, Karen Lemstra, Peg Ebert, Mara Schultz, and Luth Knight. Returning assistant manager for Avery Schmeichel, Jocelyn Jardine, and Karen Lemstra. This year, we added evening aerobics, kind of a trial basis at five thirty, three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, oh, I could put Friday, it's actually Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, so that's like this day. And we had really, I mean, fair attendance considering it's the first year. And I don't know how many, you know, are aware of it, but it was a decent attendance, I would say ten to fifteen average. Despite the cold weather, which is great for the program, we sold a total of six hundred and forty-four pool passes. Two sessions of swimming lessons were offered again this season, both June and July sessions had good turnouts. Twenty-nine pool parties were scheduled throughout the month. A few included Golden West, which we've been doing that, I think this is our third summer that we've done that, and that's always a pretty good success. Fireman's Pool Party was held July twenty-ninth, which Barb Tyler administered one of her seven drills throughout the season, all of which were successful. I want to thank Barb, she owns volunteers, her time to help keep our lifeguards and managers prepared for any emergency. She also gave another training session on using the AD in a pool environment, because even though we are AD, when we do that training, when we get certified CPR, it's just nice because this is the first time we've had it in the water area, so we need the lifeguards and managers need to know where we can, you know, put them. And so we usually have to take them out just because the deck is usually full of water, so it's just good for them to know what, where we have to do the emergencies, so that was nice. Huge thank you to Ken Warren, who actually donated the AD for the pool, so that was very generous of him. Considering our summer was much cooler than usual, we continued to have a successful summer. I want to thank the city employees and our council members for all their work and support. Our lifeguards and assistant managers did an excellent job keeping our patrons safe, and I'm so thankful for their hard work and dedication. Thanks for another great summer.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
Those look like great numbers on the guards or inside. When I say great, like maybe more than normal?
Yes, and actually, we hired all the returning, the ones from last year. I think there was only, Hart Schmeichel was the only one we did not hire back, but...
He didn't apply, so...
Right. But yeah, we would have hired him because he was awesome, but we have a great staff, and so we hired them all back, and two of those, or three, Avery Jas and Kara, were also lifeguards and assistant managers, and they did awesome at all. So they're responsible, reliable, hardworking, so I had a really good staff this year and last year, so.
Looks like your largest attendance was two hundred, two hundred, is that like throughout that time span?
Throughout the whole day, yeah, throughout that time period, so one to five.
Is there a maximum capacity?
Yeah, there is, it's about one thirty, one fifty, depending on, and then we also have that baby pool too, so that can average around seventy-five. So throughout, yeah, because we wouldn't go over if obviously we had two hundred in that pool area, but throughout the day when people are leaving and stuff, so it works good. That was probably one of our hottest days. I don't think we even went over a hundred degrees this summer. So the beginning was kind of a slow start, I know we closed a few days early, earlier in the season, but it was still decent, it was a good summer.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any constructive feedback, any things we can do better for next year or...
Well, you know, that leak is always a trouble, but as far as, I love our small pool. I know Hartford's going, so eventually we'll have to do something, but I think, I don't know, I think, I think we've had a lot of pool passes sold, so I think that shows that, you know, we are growing and that people want us to stay local. But as far as, we got new stereo this year, so we were happy about that.
True.
That's always awesome, and, you know, shade, oh, we did get new, we have how many more launchers, so that helps because we are, people are always complaining about, you know, not enough seating, but, no, I think it's, it's good, it'd be nice to have more shade, you know, that kind of stuff, because we have, and I think they're cutting those trees down, is that right, Craig?
What's that?
Those trees, are they cutting those down? The ones with the balls that would land in the pool?
There might be one coming out eventually.
Anyways, but other than that, I haven't heard any complaints from you at all.
Six hundred and forty-four pool passes, how do, do you remember how that compares to twenty twenty-three?
I know, I was gonna look that up too. It seems like, I think it'd be at five hundred and some.
I was gonna say, it seems higher.
Yeah, I think it's over a hundred.
It's just a higher.
Higher, I feel like I have five hundred and some.
Excellent, okay. I know that's always a concern, what we charge for the pool passes and that sort of thing, so...
And I've had people say that is very reasonable, so, I mean, you get both sides, there's always somebody that, but when you think about how many hours we're open in a day and how often they can come, you know, we have the morning, afternoon, the evening, weekend, well, there's seven days a week, so, and then we offer the aerobics with that, you know, for additional, so it's pretty a good deal for forty when you can come all day and all night.
Yeah, we've heard of, if anything, you're probably gonna have to limit how many people attend the aerobics. Maybe that's just somebody.
Yeah, we might have to limit him.
He only gets a punch pass.
Yeah, moving lively.
Right.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Next is the second reading of ordinance seven fifty-six, our twenty twenty-five appropriations. So there's been no change since our last meeting?
Well, there have been a couple changes, so we made that motion at the last meeting to up the fire department, that ten thousand dollars, and to split it between the operating and equipment replacement, you know, as requested, so that's been changed. And then I did change, you know, we changed our street maintenance fee, which will take effect next year, so we added that revenue in the revenue side, and then, you know, city has to be on our property, so that added expenses on the expense side, so those are the two changes to it, otherwise everything else the same since first reading.
Amy? Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance seven fifty-six?
One second.
A motion and a second, we have any discussion? We're done, call the vote. Matson?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Jas?
Yes.
And I guess. Moving on to our reports, we have the Hartford Area Fire Rescue Report. That is in our packet. I assume if I can scroll down here for a minute.
It's nice to have that three hundred pages in here.
Yeah, it is nice to have a smaller packet.
Seventy-three is still a lot, but...
The other thing in this, that jumps out to me was the six hundred people that attended the public safety date. It's, I don't know how that compares to previous years, that's a, that's a big number.
Those are pretty busy, I was hoping I'll have to look.
Yeah, I was moaning yesterday, and I from across a couple fire man stickers, that blue in my ear.
Full calls for August for thirty-six, since of those sixteen were from the city of Hartford. Moving on for, we have our Economic Development Director Report with Amy M. Farr.
Thank you, my information's in the packet. South Florida Leonard did have a meeting on Monday, and I reached out to him and asked him what was the resolution, if any, and he said at this time they do not have a final decision, so as they come to a resolution, they'll reach back out to me. I will stay on top of it, as if I don't receive something in another week or two, email again and see where they're at with it, because I just want to stay on top of it, make sure that we have a chain of command or some documentation stating that everything is good moving forward, if no implications to the group, so continue to work on that. I did file the amended covenants about a week or two ago, and got them back in the mail this last Monday because there was a little hiccup in it, so corrected that, refiled them today, so they are down there again. Pond agreement is still going through a couple different changes. Hoping that the vote for the pond agreement gets through the HADF board, and then I can send it out to the HADF attorney, and then she'll bring it to the city's attorney and Teresa to review and bring to the council for approval of that, hopefully on October first, the next meeting. Other than that, that's kind of my information as of now. Any questions for me?
So the Dakota Resources Simple Facilitation Training Counters, is that as black and white as it sounds?
Pretty much, yep.
Got it.
And I gave a brief overview at our meeting last Wednesday. Basically, and I think you might have been on the HADF board when Dakota Resources came in, they basically say remove the table, sit you in a circle with chairs, so it takes away any perceived notion that you're the head of the table, you're running the meeting, that kind of thing, they want you all on the same team, and feel free to communicate, because I think sometimes you have that communication barrier or breakdown when a table's in place going, I don't want to say anything because that person is the president or the chairman or whatever. So they just recommended different techniques and methods that you can use to get people engaged in the meetings. And then moving forward to the strategic planning session that we're looking at, I think October twenty-third for that, utilizing a method or two from that to bring in and have opinions more openly shared, more open-mindedness on growing the HADF and moving forward with different projects. So learned a couple different unique tips that I haven't heard of before, so it'll be interesting to hopefully incorporate those.
Sounds good.
Have you had new applicants?
One.
Are you, how's the interest in the project, opportunities, I should say?
For no calls?
Having some calls consistently, I would assume.
And we're receiving actually a couple different calls for some other projects within the community too, nothing finite as of now, but just continuing to monitor the different aspects of town that might be growing or seeing cement poured or whatever, or seeing people with interest and taking them around town and showing them.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, anything else for Amy? Nope. Moving on, Chamber Director Report. Good evening, Wyb.
Good evening, how are you?
Well, pretty good.
Yeah, me too.
How are you? Pretty good.
I'm good.
Good.
Good, glad to be here, always a joy to stand in front of you guys. My favorite part of the month. My report is in the packet, but I wanted to mention, since you mentioned city board applications, I too am looking for board members for the chamber board. We do not have any applications currently. I have been visiting with some people that I thought might be a good asset for the board with no definite commitments, the waiver and whatever. So if you have somebody in mind or thought somebody might be good for the board, I would love to visit with them. We currently have a board of nine, nine board members, I'm asking, which is good because we always have a quorum when we have our meetings, but would like to see it, I would like to see some different members of maybe on the board, perhaps someone from the school, would be a huge asset. And so just asking that if you think of somebody or know somebody, I would appreciate having you visit with them.
I was, I was on the board a few years ago, and at that time, we have talked about the number nine, how as compared to other communities, it is quite large.
Yes, yes, I have heard that too.
Yeah.
I have nothing to add here, so I...
Reducing the number or...
None.
None?
We have up to, our, well, I'll say that it could be up to fifteen, which I thought was a lot for a small chamber, so I, again, I didn't know what was... We, three board members have been released due to attendance things, so that's why it's gone from twelve to nine.
Do you feel, so you like to have an attendance policy or are they just good attendance?
It is, we do have an attendance policy, it's, if you miss three times without notification, then we're going to ask.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, if you're still committed or, you know, we all know that life is, I know we're volunteers, so, but when there's no notice, it's kind of one of those things that's, we've discovered it's just not important.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I too went to a Dakota Resource, I'm a part of a new cohort mentoring program, went to Dakota Wesleyan University on Tuesday last week, and the facilitation was by Joe, the president of Dakota Resource, president of the board of Dakota Resource, then he presented on board role, board member roles, and it was just extremely enlightening for me, and I do plan to bring that to the board during our strategic planning session this Thursday and Friday. I feel like I've been talking about that for the past nine months, but I'm like so giddy about getting this on paper and getting a vision for twenty twenty-five. So really looking forward to this weekend or this next few days, Thursday, Friday, so... Yeah. Oh, and I'm gonna be in the homecoming day parade in my dad's yellow Corvette, and I can't drive it, so he's driving me, but my board thought that that might be fun to get some people seeing the chamber out there and my pretty face.
Living lively.
Living lively, baby.
Hashtag's everywhere.
I put, try it.
Yeah.
That's what, all those things that I put the hashtag in there, I'm like, that's living lively, right?
Absolutely.
So you can't drive because of his picture?
No, I can't drive because he doesn't allow it, and he said, yep, you can drive it when you hand me a check or four, and I'm like, nope, not one of his kids I've ever driven to drive that, my dad and his cars. Anything else? Any other questions?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Wyb.
Thank you.
All right, our City Engineer Report. To Michael.
Good evening, everyone. Couple discussion items on there, I'll plan to get to the report and then circle back to those at the end. So general engineering update, continue to monitor the progress of construction at both the school projects as well as faulting oaks, had a proof hole today, largely went pretty well, just a couple of errors, they did spastic a little literary work prior to estimate of the rock. Moving on to the project updates, the water resource recovery facility, site piping began last week, so all the sledge lines, the floor lines, the water reuse lines between Aeromine Treatment Basin and the operations building started going, and have continued to install those to have the fault. Additionally, they have set, ended this month for startup on the trunk sewer installation again through Mickelson, so a notice was provided to the city, and those signages hasn't installed to provide advanced warning to those residents that are going to be affected by the detour. Lastly, on project updates, highway three-day water main extension, working with SiteWorks now to get contract acceptance in, I've been working with the city as well as the state county with those boards to find a time for pre-construction meeting, targeting end of month or early October for that. So once we have a construction schedule from SiteWorks, we'll provide that for council's review. Any questions on the report items?
So there's signs out about the detour?
Not yet.
Not yet. We'd say.
We just signed up today.
Okay.
And their signage is gonna go out on Monday, so we'll coordinate that with us, so we'll get it on our website, Facebook, on our Mass Alert and so forth.
I was gonna say, it would be great to use that Mass Alert system for... Especially when it's like not super urgent, we can make sure it's working.
Right, yeah, yeah, true, yeah, I'm like...
But having grow closures like that would be ideal.
Yep.
They're looking at nineteen days, so it's gonna close in a while.
We're looking at like, what, the thirtieth, it would be eighteen, something like that. It's gonna be closed down for a little while.
A lot of school traffic there, so...
Not them days.
Just one other thing to note, Water Resource Recovery Facility, Michael loaded site piping's going on, but there's a big desire to get all that site piping in this fall, so pretty much all the piping that goes between the Aeromine Operations Building, Rysley wants all the excavators offsite essentially, and then do all internal work, call it for the winter, into this spring. Whole intention is to start our startup next June, that's still on schedule, so get startup, get our startup process, have everything cooking and going before our compliance schedule, but I'm gonna prove it next year.
So if there are any more questions, we'll get into the first discussion item, utilities at ten fifty-one through trail, the property in the southwest corner of Western Metals Development, directly west of Interstate ninety. So what we had evaluated during the site plan review, there's currently city utilities stowed to that lot with the lot, the Jastrom lot to the south side of the interstate there, that was recently annexed, I believe that's about sixty-five acres there, just being proactive, looking at service to that lot. Where those utilities are stowed to the lot in Western Metals along the trail, that will provide a good connection point for the development of that lot to the south of the interstate. So what we had reviewed and what we'd like to discuss is upsizing the utilities to serve that development. Currently stowed there is an eight-inch, or sorry, rather, a twelve-inch water main and a twelve-inch sanitary sewer. What is needed for the site is only a six-inch water main and a eight-inch sanitary sewer, but we are proposing upsizing both of those to twelve inches for that pot. For city policy, city won't pay the entire cost of those utilities, simply just the difference in up-sizing costs, which we have estimated at about forty thousand dollars. It is about four hundred and fifty feet of pipe each needed. You know, with, with this, it'd be long-term cost savings. We anticipate as the nearest water and sanitary connection that would realistically be achieved would be somewhere along Western Avenue and the interstate there, that makes it quite comfortable, very expensive too, makes sense those utilities, I'll want that cordoned.
What was the concession we gave Costello? I believe there was something, maybe easement or we narrowed it up, we gave them a concession for, modified something that we originally required in their planning for the sewer water, I recall.
We did, a few years ago.
Was it through the connection north to the...
No, it was with the slot. Was it that they, they didn't want the full with the easement through there? So that's the whole deal with this, I think we narrowed it down, but there was something like that. Well, with this new development, you know, they've got to put water and sewer in anyway, like I said, to service their development. We were on a conference call last week with Tom and said, well, they give us an easement through their development of where their pipe's gonna go, you know, we can have an easement for the city, we could upsize those lines, water and sewer, so then it would, at some future point, whether it's two, five, ten years down the road or whatever, we would be able to then bore under the interstate and get water and sewer to the south side of the interstate for the new property that's recently annexed. At some point, you know, like I said, what year that is or when that is, I don't know, but at least then the, we have the easement, we have the waters who reliance in there, like Michael said, the cost of the city would be the difference in the up-sizing, because developer's gonna have to pay for their pipe regardless to service their development. So they're paying for an eight-inch pipe, you know, we need a twelve-inch, we're gonna pay for that cost difference.
The pouring difference.
Yep, and that's, and we all know, you know, costs don't get cheaper as we go, so if five years down the road or ten years down the road, we need to do this, now then we're gonna have to try to work with whoever the owner of the property is at a time, get the easement and the connection and upsize the pipe, it's, it's always gonna be more expensive in the future, so the developer is willing to, yeah, will give us that easement, they're willing to allow us to upsize as long as we pay that cost difference, so that's...
Can we pay today to put it in escrow?
Huh? Can we pay today?
Put it in escrow?
Yeah, I don't know. But, so that's the discussion, is do we want to entertain, you know, up-sizing that pipe now and getting that pipe in there, and, and then, you know, utilize, so then it's now in place, so whenever we do need to make that connection, you know, it's there. I, I think it makes sense.
Is there anything else that should be done?
Well, this would be for the water and sewer pipes, you know, so that's what the city controls, so...
So I gotta believe that a lift station is gonna be required on the south side of the interstate?
So Craig and I were just talking about that a little bit, so maybe a little clarification. In my opinion, this really benefits when a lot, because if we look at long-term water, it's gonna create a good lubricant on the south side of the interstate. Pursuer capacity, our long-term plan would likely be running sewer line on the south side of the interstate from pipe all the way over to there. So the sanitary would serve a small, call it short-term use, that would be a lift station to get up there. So the addition of this sanitary sewer aspect is a little additional feed and one additional manhole to accommodate the public improvements to get that sewer line pretty much lined up, where we just have one easement back over for those utilities.
And then in that, to your point, in the future, when that is extended to the easement brought to the actual plant, this creates a redundant move, and then the lift station can be, this can be...
Can you have a full circle of...
Yep, yep. But right now, like we said, there's a ton of efficiencies with construction, so kind of next steps, the reason why we wanted to have this discussion, see, A, is there an appetite for the approximately four thousand dollars? This work will be at all, that would be having construction cost based on the items we'll be able to handle, but the complete cost, but if we get the thumbs up tonight, we'll work on getting a developer's agreement put together, which pretty much belts out the city will cover, you know, material install cost of this and have everything lined out on the caution application, and then what the requirements are for the public utility installation, you know, our testing inspection, maintenance, all that stuff. So we'll get the thumbs up, we'll get working on that, that developer's agreement will go in front of you guys for approval, so that'll be the next step.
That'd be the point we'd address, the actual change to the budget.
Yeah, yeah, it can be.
It's gonna be an increase.
Once you approve the agreements, then you're approving, you know, using reserves or whatever for the budget.
Yeah, we don't know exactly when that would hit, it may be in twenty-five, it may be in twenty-six.
Well, the upfront cost of the pipe's gonna, oh, yeah, we don't know if it's gonna be twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, until they put it in, we don't, we don't know when we'd enter the expense.
Yeah, I think there may be some anticipation.
Yeah, I think there may be some anticipation of starting some work this year, potentially, so.
Okay. The budget's already low.
Yeah.
Always put all your losses in reporter or list case like you're. I'm making a bad, it's hard to manage.
That's what we want, to make sure that if we wanna pursue this, like Justin says, we'll work on agreements, um, dispel everything out, and those agreements will still have to come before you guys for final approval and. Yep. And towards the final.
Nothing more annoying than ripping up something that's new.
Exactly, it's like a typical, this is gonna get cheaper, it's now's the time to do it.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay.
The second item for discussion is for the water resource recovery facility, uh, and this is, um, for potential use of contingency funds for additional cleanout, um, just west of the operations building. Um, on that influence force main line, um. This would serve two purposes, it would provide another access point along that, uh, influence force main for maintenance to ensure that it is as operating as intended. Uh, and then additionally, as regionalization talks or industry, um, coming to plan, come to fruition. Uh, it provides a secondary access point to that influence force main ahead of the screen and ahead of, um, flow measuring, um, as well, and would allow, um, could aim to be sub. So that, once it is connected in the future, that it is, um, not as impactful to the flow of the plant as it could be about in such a way that, um, it's basically plug and play. Rysley has estimated this cost for the additional cleanout at twenty thousand dollars, um, however, the final cost will be provided, um, after the next meeting, if there's a desire to.
Didn't we ask last time what else? Went on there and we're like, oh no, we're good.
This guy brought it, so I was a little worried about the pig that they, it's called a pig, they run it through the force main to, to clean it. And I was a little worried about getting through a ninety at the end of the line, so. Really don't wanna get, if we end up pegging it, which probably be ten, fifteen years or longer, but you really don't want that pig getting stuck, you know. So, this would be that, it's an exit point for that pig too, so.
I think something to consider, um, you know, from my perspective, if we're looking at some efficiencies now, this twenty thousand dollars, which can be a connection point for future regionalization. Or industry, whatever it may be, we understand what this cost is today. When we look at quick enough on that or how that works in the grand scheme of things and regionalization, we can hold that cost, and we understand what that is. And that, or that into some of the connection aspects later on, would be my recommendation if we wanna go forward with this.
Is this something that would be difficult to add at a later time?
It's gonna be easier now. Just like with everything with force main, um, plant is in life right now, so.
You end up having to shut the force main valve through a few hours, whatever it's gonna take to make that first connection, you have to cut the pipe, do splicing there. Put the Y and all that stuff, and then, once you get back so far, you get the valve on, then you go turn the force main on, so depending on when it, when it got put in, depending on what the flows are, you might be pushing.
And I know Cindy, we told you, we were just gonna have, you know, those last ones, but I would anticipate that.
It's just like keeps, it's just gonna keep happening, that's my fear.
Well, the biggest thing is, we just wanna have some discussion on these items and make sure we have the ideas that are vetted, that we think are worthwhile, bring it to you guys, and we bring them to you. Instead of just dismiss them or not even bring them up, right?
I concur, I think that's great. You don't know what you don't know, and so this is good to know.
I mean, that's the, the funds for, right? I just, we're also finding out using that for some of the other expenses we didn't have.
Our contingency uses still, so definitely positive on that, um. You know, I can, something that we should have had, we're at right now, but we didn't get much below that, four hundred K, we have a little over a hundred for all the utilities, so.
We talked about, we definitely wanna make sure we reserve enough for those utilities, so we have to pay out of hockey, you know, the electrical and the real water that we talked about, so. It is an open above our contingency.
If we give you the nod, we get an actual formal proposal to work on in our next meeting.
Yep.
Yep, keep going, so.
So, we have to bring it forward, bring it forward to just our pay out and our contingency use, so. And then if there's additional information that you guys need before, then, um, definitely reach out and we'll, so.
Just cutting in Craig's office for our church.
I just eliminated another door.
I have to start going through the hotel. Anything else? That's all I got, unless you guys have additional questions.
Thank you. Public Works Superintendent, report Craig Wigner.
Still talking about maybe eliminating some furniture, we're budgeting money for new furniture, so we'll keep our old stuff down the hand just in case we need it.
That looks like, honestly, that looks like a work conflict, that old stuff.
So, in my report, uh, I was out in Lee Deadwood, or out in Deadwood last, um, week for that conference, um, went to, I, I went to the water side of it, uh, just 'cause there's some huge updates with EPA and NAD or something going on. Uh, lead service lines, they do have some updates on that that is coming up, um, November, by November fifteenth, we have to have letters sent out, all the homeowners have to have either lead service lines or no ones. So, we do have some of them, so we'll be working on those, get those letters sent out to them, uh, hopefully here next few weeks, we'll get those out to them.
What if they just tell them?
Just let them know, let them be aware that they have a lead service line, or there's a line that we don't know what it is. And those lines we will work on, next summer, we'll start doing some potholing in those areas to see what they have. And it sounds like if we, like, six, seven, and eight, we're not really sure what's up there, we're pretty sure what's there, but. Once we identify a couple of them, they said we can write the whole works off on that as, as what it is, because it all to put at the same time. So, we should, when we get down to it, we'll, we do have eleven lead service lines that we do know of.
When someone gets a letter, then what?
Um, so when they get the letter, um, they will, they'll be getting the letter every year unless something changes with it. Um, everything will have to be changed completely out in ten years, is what they're shooting at right now. So, there will be some grants available, the grant right now is, they're not really sure how to take it, because if you look at it one way, it says that you have to replace the whole service line, which means digging back into a brand-new street and replacing it, which doesn't make sense for the grant money. So, instead, one of them says that you have to go all the way back to, to the complete service line, the other one says you have to go back to where the PBC or poly is at and tie in there. So, when you're sure you have a service line that's non-lead. It's lead and copper thing has been going on for quite a few years, um, even if you change all the service lines, there's still copper pipes with lead soldering out there, you know. So, we'll still be testing for it, I'm sure, forever, basically. We do testing right now, like twenty samples a, every three years, and we have to do, uh, different random houses to tell. But, um, like I said, it's lead and service line, we'll do the initial letters, and then next year, we'll, if something changes and we can take them off and not, and those people can get taken off the list, and then the other ones get the letters. We're kinda hoping that when this comes out, that the ones that got the lead service lines will say, you know what, I wanna get mine changed. So, they might take it upon themselves to change or get the service line changed for them. Cause we're good from the curb stop to our main, to the main, but from the curb stop to house where we got the lead service lines, yeah. So, it's gonna be an ongoing thing, it's gonna take some time, uh, another thing that we, um, there's a thing called PFAS, it's P F A S. And thank God, we don't have to test for it, but real water does, um, and if there's somewhere along the line, they, they start sampling now, and then that'll set their sampling sites up that they have to do, uh, how many samples I have to do a year. Um, they'll have to do them samples, if they have a bad sample, then they gotta do more sampling, and then they have to know if it's high enough with limits, has to notify the public, which I asked them, I said, does that mean that they're gonna just notify us? We have to notify the people, or how does that really work? Still in the making, something that came up really fast, um, the, everything's gonna be in effect by twenty twenty-seven, so it's gonna be something that moves pretty fast, so.
What's that stand for?
Does it say the same ground contaminants as that pack, as?
For that sake, this is basically just testing for contaminants in the water.
So, yeah, so like anything that's got petroleum in for a product, and like your plastic bags, if they got buried next to a well or something like that, or something from a, a paint spill from years ago, I mean, it's, it's in everything. So, I mean, I don't know how they're gonna not have samples that don't pass, I mean, it's in everything. So, it's, it makes people a little nervous about it, it's been there forever and will be, I mean, so.
Back to that lead, uh, service line deal, will that be something, you know, when you, when you buy a home, an older home, it says, you know, be aware of lead paint? Is that something that would be aware of a lead service line, is that, are they going that far?
That I don't know, if they're gonna have an exposure on that, so we know which homes are in town that do have them, um, and then, like I said, hopefully, if they have it, they'll make the homeowner aware, you know.
So, we make that homeowner aware, but it doesn't get registered with the county or the state or anything like that?
The state's got records of it all, yeah. Cause we had to do that initial survey of everybody in town, and fill all that stuff out, and that, and that has to be done by October twenty-fourth, I believe it is. We had ours done last, like, April, we had it done in September, so.
All right, all right, thank you.
So, that's with that, uh, just a couple other quick highlights, um, the August DMR report's been filled out and sent in, um. For parks, uh, Pickleball, we, we're hoping to have a ribbon cutting here next week, but we have been working with Gold West, trying to get the logo correct or like that. We finally think we got everything the way they want it, and how it's gonna work, so we'll go through the process right now, it's hopefully been a few weeks or less, we'll have that logo on, we have a sign up, so.
So, their logo's painted on the course?
It's gonna be painted on the course, yeah.
So, I noticed there's no whites around there.
Nope. Another bunch of item down the road. Uh, pool, uh, Neil, Jim been up there working, they do, they're starting to put things back together right now, so we're looking at about probably ten to twelve thousand dollars in parts and materials, um. A little bit of labor in there, and then it's also with concrete, uh, redo the concrete up there, uh, maybe up to fifteen thousand max, but, um. He's, he's working on that, he's got the drain line, trying to get the drain lines back together, uh, everything in there's old cast iron pipe, they found, wanna, think what happened is it sagged, settled over the years, and that was full of water and froze and broke the pipe, is what happened, it cracked, and so. Um, we're working on making sure we can get our big drain back properly, you know, and get a block properly, so. So, we're moving ahead of that, um, hopefully within a few weeks, one of the pipe being done, and getting put the concrete back in and be ready for next year. Uh, Sports Complex, block layers are a little slower than they thought they'd be, but this week they thought they'd be done, so next week, we are gonna be putting up their, um, rafters and getting the roof on and stuff like that, so. After that, we'll work on the plumbing and the concrete work, so it's moving, it's moving along good, it just takes time, so. That's all I got in my report, unless somebody has something for you.
The Hackberry tree guy, huh?
Yes, that dang thing. Justin called me when I was off the hills and told me, he said, you can believe this, he said, the Hackberry's dropping his berries with guys doing a service, saying he can't do it with it coming down. So, he said, gonna take it down, so, so it had to go. But it was nice shade, though, we're putting up the fence and doing all the other.
But it wasn't bad shade, was it?
It wasn't, I mean, it had one branch that broke off, and it had one storm, but the rest had hung in there, so.
Probably the only Hackberry tree in town, isn't it?
Uh, there's quite a few in the park.
Is there?
They actually make really nice trees, they're good shade trees.
Yeah, but they're dirty.
But all trees are, though.
Thank you, Craig, anything else for Craig? Moving on, our finance officer report is in the packet, Craig has gone this evening. Questions on that? All right, City Administrator, report Teresa.
Just a couple of quick updates, um, Dixon Street project, the guys have got all the punchless items done, hopefully we'll have a, um, final payout to you guys at the next meeting, we can close out this project, so. That'll make Arden happy, everybody, everybody happy.
The punch was done, I think since that got canceled.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure, well, it's been two years, I can say it's. Yep, project's been going on for two years, I bet so.
It's been knocked out.
It's too long. Kinda too long.
Um, otherwise, uh, the other projects, I kinda got updates on them, uh, we talked about the Mickelson Road closure, like I said, they told us Monday they're gonna get signage out, so we will push it out on Monday as well, so people know about it. Um, I've already contacted this work coworker at the school a few weeks ago and said, kind of the timeline, so I'll get ahold of him tomorrow and say these are the dates that we know, so he's, he's aware of it as well as far as the.
Especially like six buses, we don't have road anymore.
Yeah, so, I can, I gave a little heads up earlier, so, I don't know, these are the dates that we're looking at, so.
Make it cut across the place, um.
Yeah, so.
Give her a, they all go down.
Yeah, we wanna talk about traffic, do we have any idea how many trucks are currently hauling through Hartford daily?
Like through?
I like those big tandems, like for the, I think, I think it's all for the.
Oh, like I said, we get a lot of trucks, and we've got a place for the school.
Interstate, isn't it, or what's it, where do they haul them for?
Oh, the ones that go on Highway thirty-eight, oh yeah, the interstate project, yeah.
I was in line at the bank, and in a matter of like five minutes, there was two tandems.
Just wait till next day.
Yeah, side dumps.
As long as, as long as they stay on Highway thirty-eight, that's good.
Yes, great, great, exactly, but, um, it certainly presents, uh, a little bit of a safety concern, obviously. They seem to be, you know, following speed limits and all of that, but there's a couple of crosswalks there, so.
Yeah, we have any interstate fund? Of course we'll have it then next year. I don't know, I'm growing, it'll be, so.
We don't have any road proj, we're not gonna have any road projects on that side of town, on Mickelson or.
Next year?
Yes.
We don't have a whole.
Traffic issues with the development back.
As long as the site works, can get the water and sewer put in this fall, we won't have any disruption, so.
Which contract dates are to have it done this fall, and that indication is it will come this fall? Unless it starts tomorrow, yes, you're, yeah.
But it'd be first thing this spring, probably before this project.
I think about the other development there.
My, yeah.
How could, it could be a long summer.
Um, on the twelfth and Oak Street project, um, Ask Earth with IDG is here, we do have a change order on the agenda, so we'll kinda give an update and talk about that when that comes up. Um, otherwise, um, the other thing in my report, I just wanted to point out, the TAP grant, you know, that's, we're gonna start with the bike trail along Mickelson Road, um. Me, Sophie, and Michael and Justin met last weekend, talked about it, um, they're working on finishing up the application and getting cost estimates for that. We hope to be done with that this week and get it in early next week into the state. So, um, we're looking at breaking it down really into three phases, the first one being that bike trail that'll connect the Turtle Peak Highlands to basically the rest of the city with it. And then, um, the next two years, split in the various sidewalk connections that we have, and then we'll kinda split the costs off for that and submit it as that, so. So, working on that, should have that in next week, um, dipped a little blip, if you remember, C-COVID applied for a grant to do a study with, and this is part of the MPO, with surrounding communities can do it. They did get that grant, so I noted that in here, so we are part of that study, we paid twenty-five hundred to be part of it, so they will identify areas, um, safety concerns, where we do need sidewalks, or we need streetlights even, you know, just things that we're, we too are looking at, um.
So, will they work with you to do that project, or does someone come in and do it, you just?
They'll hire a consultant, and they'll work with all the communities that are involved in it, and I think one group study, just like the counties work in, you know, I'm part of their study advisory team, you know, to get the aspect of the city with it. And, and they do public meetings, but.
It'd be nice to find a way to pay for some of these other projects.
Well, and that's just it, so once this study, like, everything, you know, when grant funds are involved, they like, if you show, you've done this study that shows a need for this, whether it be lighting here or whatever, that gives you a lot more points in getting a grant, so, it does help. So, it'll help that way, plus, like I said, they're gonna do this study this next year, the following year, they are gonna make grant funds available, so, for the various projects that are identified, so, that'll be helpful. Um, so, I'm, we'll start, we started on that, um, Craig mentioned, um, Pickleball, we were planning a ribbon cutting kinda tentatively for next Tuesday. We don't think we'll have the logos and then the signage in up for it, so it's gonna be October first is what, but we are confirming that with our painter, hopefully by this. But we are confirming that with our painter, hopefully by this week, Thursday or so. Because he finally just got the logo. He's gotta make the stencils ready and it's supposed to rain later this week, so we're hoping next week he'll get it painted. And not, uh, October first will be the Tuesday of our council meeting, so we're planning like five-thirty, so maybe look great for a council meeting again.
And just, uh, confirm on that, the ball didn't get dropped on our side or contractor's side, that's all I'm saying, so.
Took a little while to get the logo for Gold West, so.
Been more than a couple of months, so.
Yeah, so we will definitely keep you posted, but hopefully October first, five-thirty is what we're tentatively planning for that now. Um, otherwise, any questions you have in my report?
Um, and the TAP application, um, I wanna make sure the council's comfortable with the master plan and both of you submitting the application for phase one, I don't think there's any, any other questions about that.
Yeah, that's, you know, we talked about starting with that bike path in Turtle Creek. It'll go all the way to Patrick Avenue where the current one stops and, um, it lost me a little, what, seven hundred thousand, a little above the six hundred thousand, but, you know, it's all one project, so we'll open the state.
Are those plans available for the city council to have access to or?
They've got kind of a map. It isn't real, they're not fully engineered plans because it's just an application at this point, but, um, yeah, they, they showed me a map, so we can shoot that out to you guys.
Perfect.
If you email it to me, I can email it to the council, so.
Definitely, alright, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, phase one would be that bike trail and then phase two would be they kinda split up. You know, the rest of it is infilling of sidewalks that kinda took part of the city and then they just kinda split that in half, so. Phase two would be one section and phase three would be another section, so yeah, we'll send that out to you.
How's that work with our mayor's initiative for sidewalk improvements? Totally different. Uh, they're related. No, there's no parallels that can be drawn there between this and what he.
And the city sidewalk commission, you mean?
Well, is it the mayor's?
Oh, the ma- yeah, you're right, you're right, it's the mayor's. Well, like I said, you know, uh, as we look, you know, it kinda being, it's part of our greater plan. I mean, this is a good first step to get some sidewalks in and then, you know, it's less to do, you know?
We can identify this as one of the roads or sidewalks.
He talks about lighting, signage, all of that stuff, so it's, it's great. Okay, that's all I have. Alright, so no old business, moving on to new business. Can you view and approve the tax payment for parcel eight zero one six zero? That information is in the packet. Uh, this is, this is the first time, uh, from my understanding for this parcel specific.
Yes, and it's for a to- totally disabled bit and they qualify for the straight state regulations.
So it doesn't knock down the whole bill, it just knocks it down by a hundred and fifty thousand?
Right, um, there are certain income guidelines and certain levels. I don't, I don't know, cause county works with it, we don't, but you can only, there is a maximum level that you can apply for, so. And as with this one, like I said, their taxes greater than the hundred and fifty thousand that they can claim, so.
I'd make a motion to approve the tax payment for parcel, uh, eight oh one six zero.
Second.
Any discussion? C nine, Call the vote, Mattson?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Barron's?
Yes.
And IBS. Could you approve the change order number three to the alliance construction, to the alliance construction? And the amount of seven thousand, seventeen dollars and ninety cents. Information regarding how that came to be used in the packet, some credits, some dividends.
Well, there, there are basically four items. Three of them are additional costs and cha- changes to the plan and then one of them is a credit. Um, we can go through each one of them and if, like I said, Astrid is here, if you have any questions, but, um, basically, um, originally, and if you remember in the plans, the bolts for the water line that go, goes to the water tower, the bolts were there when we first started this project. We wanted those checked because that water line is put in several years ago. Wanted to make sure they're still holding up, that they didn't need replacing or whatnot. So we put that into the plan to check and replace those, um, bolts. We dug a couple up and checked them. They looked great, so since they didn't need replacing, that is a credit to us, cause it doesn't need to be part of the plan. So that is a credit that is given to us and that's almost twelve thousand dollars. Um, the other item that's on the paper is that, um, when they did a proof rule of Twelfth Street, there were some soft spots. ISG discussed with, um, IDG, um, what to, you know, what's the best way to handle those. Um, obviously, we don't want any soft spots around our utilities, you know, you don't want your utilities sagging or whatnot, so. They decided the best way is to bring in some rock to firm up those areas, so that is what this additional cost is. It's about fifteen hundred for bringing in additional rock to stabilize it and especially around our utilities there. Um, item number three is for, and this is kind of more of a costly one, but it's, um, our design standards require floating manholes and we've talked about that before. We, we require them now because they all basically kinda adjust with the thaws and freezes, yeah, of the season. Um, our design standards call for that. Um, in our specifications, we call on actual model number, which is not a floating, um, manhole and that's what was in the plans. So, um, that is what the contractor bid on. Um, we do though, per design specs, we do want those flying, floating manholes. And we would've, if we had realized, um, the design, you know, model number wasn't correct, we would've had that in the plan and that would've been a cost we would've paid upfront anyway. It would've been bid. Um, so, but that's about twelve thousand dollars to get those changed, um, to the floating manholes. And then the last one is that, um, we have, I believe, three hydrants along Twelfth Street that fire, um, fire hydrants, water hydrants along there that, um, we were gonna keep and save because they're perfectly good condition. Uh, but we realized that after we started doing the road grading, like I said, you don't know what you don't know, um, that those, the, just cause the height of the road changed, we've gotta extend those fire hydrants up. So that's what that last one is for, and that's about six thousand dollars for those three.
There must be fewer suppliers for fire hydrant parts than there are for floating manholes.
Their number's a little high, I was talking to Teresa about us doing them, but we only pay ten percent of it, so.
I said, you know, um, all of these changes should, I talked with Sophie, should be covered by the grant, so you know, we're only paying ten percent. So if you break that down, if it's the actual cost of the ci- I mean, this is gonna be total cost, so the actual cost of the city isn't gonna be this, you know, larger amount. Um, and if there are any specific questions for IDG regarding, um, kinda talking through them just internally with the staff and I think they need to be made.
They did note on the floating casting too, so Teresa was noting some of the design standard and specification discrepancy. We did have that identified and as part of the updated, uh, specification revision, we did have that.
Yeah, so, so the, so what we passed, you know, for updating it, that is, they did identify that and that, that change is going forward, corrected, yeah.
The detail on the spec are in the line?
They're in the line now, but after what we just passed last month, yeah. Cause we wanted to make sure, okay, are we in the line now, so, yeah.
Those details, get it checked.
Make a motion to approve change order three for Twelfth and Oak Street project.
Any further discussion? Call the vote, Barron's?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
And IBS. Thank you. Alright. A B quotes.
Yeah, we finally got them. And, and as of last Friday morning, I thought you were only gonna have two because I was still waiting for one, but Friday afternoon it finally came through, so. You got it.
As far as you, as far as you have helped.
So the quotes, yeah, are, are in your packet. Um, basically, kinda like we talked before, the upgrades are gonna be to, um, upgrade to, uh, videos and, you know, TV monitors on that wall. Um, two of the quotes just have a large, um, TV screen on there. Um, quote number two, I believe it is, actually has two screens on there. Um, otherwise, all the rest of them, you know, it also is upgrading our camera system. They all are proposing a camera on this, you know, facing this way. Um, upgraded sound system to go with that camera, so we can have qua- good quality recordings. None of these, with these quotes, cause mainly because we had a budget of money, will allow us to live stream at this point, but they all can be upgraded to that. They can all still utilize the same camera and, um, sound system or whatnot. It would just have to be an upgrade. At some point, whenever we decide, if we decide we wanna live stream our, our meetings, um, right now, our hits on YouTube aren't that many, so I don't know if it pays to do it right now, but we will have that capability to upgrade in the future. The screen controls would be controlled at this, um, table. One of them calls for having an extra iPad added into the bin. Um, two of them though, could just be from my laptop, Karen's laptop, somebody, we can control the screens from the laptop, so. Just kinda like when you do a Zoom meeting where you can share your screen or whatnot, you can share it, um, like I said, I think there are all these companies, um, the quote, I, I, like I put in my report, my preference, I kinda like the ideal of having two screens on that wall, just cause we could throw up, you know, the packet maybe on one of them, kinda follow through from that and then if we get to a point where engineers or developers, somebody has a presentation or whatnot or property, we can throw that up on the other one too, or, you know, we can kinda have.
Where would they be mounted?
We're looking at this one, yeah. And so the, the proposal, the, for the two of them, um, number two, it'd be like, the proposals for like a TV screen like that, because they said if we wanna utilize that one, we can and save, we have a lot of cost saving. I kinda would like to keep that setup as is because that's nice to come over, when we have smaller meetings, to pull it over to the table and, you know, and that, if, if we would have that screen, you know, we'd be super far away and I would just like to keep that setup. I think it's very convenient for smaller meetings that we have.
What size is that TV? What size is it?
Sixty-five inch?
Yeah, sixty-two.
Yeah, cause they kinda measured it twelve that. Now, we've got a fairly big wall. We could go, I, I measured it today after I got some news. There is enough room we could upsize, so you know, we could go to larger TVs there, you know, up to what our budget models.
Look at things on the screen, maybe that's better.
Yeah, so you know, um, this quote is only for twelve thousand. We do have fifty, fifteen thousand in the budget, so you know, if you want to, if you like that ideal and want to approve that quote, you know, you could approve this quote or any quote, you know, up to that fifteen thousand, cause that's where your budget is. If we do go with this, we could look to see, you know, how big we can go with screens, you know, up to our budget amount, like that. And I agree, the bigger's better, cause it's just easier to see and we're way far away and my ears are that good, so.
I'd like to give order, maybe do one there, one there.
Well, I guess I was with you too. I thought it was asking me on the back wall, so that we were looking at it, but that's not very audience friendly.
Well, and that's, that's what I was thinking.
Well, if you did a bigger one, you'd still go hook this one up to the same system at the same time and then still have available for port, you're right.
Well, then we'd have to have a connection. We'd either have to have a port connection with that. What's proposed in here, it, it would be a, a remote connection with them, so.
I, I mean, I think it's important to be able to do some meetings and things like that and.
I think we'll have much better quality recordings or whatnot with the system, camera system, and I do like that the audience have a chance to follow along with what information, you'll see what information you guys are looking at, what we're talking about and just be more transparent too.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, if the camera's there, my pre- you know, my preference, at some point, we'd be letting the monitors over there, we add some of those maybe in the future or something. But to your point, having these here, huge, huge group.
We can see it, the audience can see it, you guys can see it, so it's, I think that, that'd be a great first step as far as, yeah, and that's, I mean, you can always add to your system.
I make a motion to, um, approve the quote from company two and to explore larger screens up to budgeted amount.
Second. Any further discussion? Um, I have a question. I assume that there would need to be some electrical added probably to power those screens?
Yeah, I mean, they talked about having to do some upgrades, yeah, to our, um, adding like plugins for the, the TVs over there. Probably one for over here with computers, yeah, they, they kinda, each of them kinda.
Just, just to your point, Cindy, about, you know, other, other expenses, there will be some other expenses.
Yeah, and, and then, then those all within. And those, those are all talked about in place within the quote, whatnot, um, and I think I put it in my report, but all of them too will do installation and training with, that's all part of the quote to it, it's presented to you, so.
You don't feel like, uh, I mean, one and two are very similar, um, but not, but not inferior to, to company three by any stretch?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
Company three has a.
I think two, by starting to have some of that, you know, ability, we can, if people, we do need to have people remote or we do, like, it just becomes a better than trying to call it on a cell phone or something.
Right, and that's true too, those brought up with the two screens, you can still have your screen for information and if you wanted to like, uh, a conference call, video call, that could be on the other one as well if, um, when you guys had to call in or whatnot.
This, this would solve the cell phone next to the microphone?
It should, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
We are hoping, yes, and that's.
Alright.
Cause, cause yes, I've talked with all three of them about being able to do video conferencing, I mean, so.
Well, and I would, maybe at some point, that'll be opportunities for other types of meetings that we have traveled for. Now, if they have virtual options, I don't know if they do or not, um, but.
Call the vote, Barron's?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
And IBS. Do we need to move into executive session?
I don't know anything.
Entertained a motion to adjourn, so moved. All in favor?
I.